Okay, good afternoon. Thank you. Good afternoon, everybody, and welcome to the June 25th Board of Selectment meeting. As always, we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Thank you. Item number two on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of the Board of Selectment's special meeting on June 9th. Is there a motion to accept those minutes?
I motion to accept the minutes of our special meeting on June 9th.
Jill Oberlander, I second that motion.
Okay, all those in favor, Fred Camillo's aye.
Jill Oberlander, yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Okay, approved, thank you. Is there a motion to accept the Board of Selectment meeting of minutes of the meeting of June 11, 2020?
Lauren Raven, I move to approve the minutes of our Board of Selectment meeting from June 11, 2020.
Jill Oberlander, I second that.
And all those in favor, Fred Camillo votes yes.
Jill Oberlander votes yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Okay, both of those meetings, the minutes are approved. Item number three will go to the First Selectment's updates. And I'll start with the Reimagined Committee, Reimagined Greenwich Committee. We're going to start up next week. A few of us have had some meetings already preliminary, but I'll be getting a notice in the next probably few hours about confirmation for date and time. It's really about the whole of Greenwich, not just Greenwich Avenue. But I will go over the various parts, what's going on now, what's planned in the various business districts in town. I think everybody's most familiar with Greenwich Avenue. Things that I think all three of us were talking about for a while, doing eventually is now getting pushed up, which is good, accelerated. The nodes seem to be working really well. We are going to start with the bump outs, the permanent transformation of the avenue with the bump outs. And there was money that was approved in the budget a few weeks ago to start with one intersection, which will have the intersection before spots there pushed out. So when you're driving down Greenwich Avenue, it's going to look like you're leaving one section and entering a totally different district. So that will start this fall. But right now, you can kind of get an idea what it'll look like, but it's going to look a lot nicer with obviously the appropriate plantings and trees and flowers. Trying to address all of the questions as they come up and concerns. While it's overwhelmingly positive from both the residents, visitors and residents and visitors, as well as the merchants, there's still a few that have concerns, so we're working through that. But so far, so good. We're getting lots of good reports. And I know Lauren's been down there, I know Jill, if you've been there yet, but it's really a different place there at night. And so we're happy with that. We're also going forward with the waterfront district concept this fall. We'll be having some forums and meetings on that. The Roger Sherman Bowman Park RFPs were sent out. We will be selecting a firm to redesign that park shortly. So that's all good. The Grace Museum's moving along with their renovations. And finally, the last piece of that downtown area is the train station that we're still, the negotiations are still ongoing. But I hope something will be done there, just what, we don't know at this point. But it'll certainly be an improvement. And part of the Reimagined Greenwich group, some of the people that are involved already talked about fundraising effort to help with the beautification of downtown, as well as possibly fund a trolley slash tram that could be from Town Hall. We envision every 30 minutes or so, which also ties into the parking. You know, we're looking at getting some of the employees who work on the avenue off of the avenue and parking somewhere else. And so this trolley slash tram idea could help with that effort too. In Byram, returning there again tomorrow, this time with Katie DeLuca and Margarita Albin. Was there again two days ago or three days ago, and I was knocking on the doors of some businesses. And I was shocked that some were not aware that they could actually go outside now. So that they're all done home now to get outside, I told them the process, how to do that. Some were already happy. There's a couple stores there that are struggling, but some are actually doing quite well. There were at least three properties along the river that are falling apart and that are also have open access, which causes a public safety issue. So that's what we're going to go down there tomorrow and do everything we can to compel the property owners to not only fix the problem, but to try to knock them down. Because in one case, it's already falling down. And it's been that way since I lived down there. So it's time, it's time. And I think the people in Byram are going to be really happy with what they see. We also had some parking concerns last week. So Deputy Chief Marino and I went down there. We told the residents what to do if they see a car that's been parked in a spot for a few days and hasn't moved, just to let us know. And so it's just like the broken windows theory. If something's broken, you got to fix it immediately. If you see graffiti, we got to clean it up immediately. Hats off, thank you to the Parks and Rec Department. While we were there, we saw that, we heard from Rob Catalano, Catalano Brothers Marina, that last weekend in broad daylight, four kids were spray painting stuff all over our town. What do you call the thing at the pocket park there? The buoy. That's been there for a while. So I called up Director Siciliano, and he sent somebody down there right away. So whenever we see things, we have to just let people know and get down there and fix it. Glendale was a little tougher, Lauren had walked that with me. We do have some ideas there. Reached out to Glendale resident Dana Hendrickson again this morning to schedule another meeting there. Old Greenwich, they wanted to go outside in the front, and then they sent an email saying they didn't want the parking taken away. So we put it back on them to let us know where they want us to help them. Applause is already in the back of their restaurant. It's doing really well, and he loves it, and he'd love for it to be permanent. So we're going to work on that. But as far as the other restaurants across the street, they have to let us know how they want, they want us to help with that because it's private property there. So waiting to hear back from them. Cosgob, supposed to meet with Julie Chapetta and Randy Carbella and Kenley Schmitz over there in Cosgob about what we can do there for that neighborhood. And the Beach Tree opening's been going well. Going down there and looking, and people are pretty much staying apart. The beach boats will start servicing, their service on June 29th, so that's coming up. And lastly, the walk bridge controversy in Bruce Park. Personally, I don't think it's a very nice structure. I think it blocks what was a beautiful vista there. So been doing a deeper dive into that and put a call into Commissioner Seibert today and into Eversource and have an idea how to mitigate that going forward, lessening the chances of that happening again. This was something that was done, predated this Board of Selectment. But typically, the utilities will work with the departments to come up with a plan that they think is mutually acceptable. But in this case, there was no oversight from our judiciary. So I have an idea of how to address that going forward, so that doesn't happen again. So with that, I will turn it over. Lauren, you're right in front of me, so we'll go to Selectwoman Raven for her updates.
Thanks, Fred. The three big things I'm working on, I am continuing to educate myself on the 4G, 5G small cells that are being installed in our town. And I'm going to be meeting with some of the members of the Greenwich Residents for Responsible Technology Group, as well as stay abreast, there is a task force within the Western Connecticut Councils of Government called Land Use Planning for Wireless Telcom Task Force. So as I'm learning, I'm definitely going to educate my fellow, or brief, my fellow board members as to what I learn and any conclusions that I draw from it. Also, as liaison to the Commission on Aging, we kicked off a strategy planning process, as well as discussed with the Strategy Planning Committee, options for reopening the senior center and any abilities that we have to make improvements in the building while it's empty. So we're going to continue to have that dialogue. And as Fred just mentioned, I've been visiting some of the districts to gain their input on how we reimagine Greenwich beyond Greenwich Avenue, all the business districts that we have in town. Specifically, my participation was Byram and Glendale. And that's my update.
Thank you. Are you getting many calls from residents about the 5G issue?
We had a few emails, I think all three of us. And then, once I thanked people for sending me the email, then the floodgates kind of opened. So I'm just going to meet with them and just to listen to what their concerns are. My assumption is that it's safety and what the FCC regulates as a safe environment and what people who might live near where these little small cell antennas are being placed, I think is safe. Also, in looking into the task force, there are, and I imagine, and we'll have to find out, Fred, maybe you can help me here, that there's somebody from Greenwich that's on the task force. It's probably one of our municipal employees, not necessarily an elected person. But there are guidelines as to what types of structures that you can put these little mini antennas on and what location. So I definitely need to learn more and understand if we've been following guidelines or not. You know, I'm not making any assumptions.
Okay, thank you. And Selectwoman Oberlander, hi Jill.
Yeah, hi Fred, hi Lauren, thank you. So just a couple of things that have been continuing projects. The Sustainability Committee continues to meet. We have now set up and established sector subgroups and chairs, and they are all going out and meeting with stakeholders and identifying priorities and ways in which we can enhance our coordination and communication amongst all of the groups in Greenwich that are working on sustainability initiatives. We've heard a lot about the waste diversion and reduction programs in the last couple of weeks. And now I want to encourage everybody to see what we're doing on the food scraps, as well as textiles should be coming soon. And trying to, then the Greenwich Recycling and Waste Free Greenwich will be working to establish surveys so that we can see how, what people's reactions are, as well as other metrics that we might want to capture. The committee is also looking to work with the First Selectmen in setting up the Advisory Committee on Tipping Fees so that we can make use of this year to really understand the impact on residents and on our commercial establishments and come up with the best waste diversion reduction program throughout the town. I'll be turning my attention over the next couple of weeks, working with other committee members to energy issues and reaching out to the Board of Education and town departments to figure out whether there are ways that we can improve and enhance our energy practices. And something that Fred and I will talk about shortly after this meeting is some of the transportation options, including options for electric or low emission vehicles, possibly the trolley or the bus. And possibly one of the town employees has been working very closely with the statewide coalition on electric school buses. And how do we enhance our transportation network to make it friendlier for bicycles, pedestrians, and lower emission vehicles? Looking into, just a reminder to everybody on idling, one of the great benefits of being in our quarantine has been our better air quality, as most of us have appreciated, as we come back out into more active stance. Just remember to turn off your car, open your windows if it's hot. No idling, and we'll be looking at the idling issues as a means of improving our air quality as well. So that's coming up. That's all on the Sustainability Committee. And thanks to Angelina Kather. We will hopefully have a link on the website sometime over the course of the summer, where residents can find out a little bit more about what we're doing and in order to enhance our communication as well. Still participating in the United Way COVID Relief Grants discussions. And they've been actively working for the last couple of months to provide emergency funding resources to the needier nonprofits by application in our community. I'm also starting now to meet with some of the nonprofits to understand the challenges that they face for the next phase of reopening. I met with Neighbor to Neighbor last week, and I will be reaching out to some of the other nonprofits to start to understand what their challenges are. And that will better allow us to be fluid in our response as a town and to understand what the challenges are going to be for our residents and our nonprofits going forward as we move into this next phase. Always better to be ahead of the curve as opposed to behind the curve. So we'll try to anticipate that as well. And those are the two main priorities. And look forward to learning a little bit more about Reimagined Greenwich.
Thank you. Good stuff there. Really exciting. So thank you, thank you both. With that, we'll go over to old business. I don't see any on there today. So with that, we'll skip over to new business. And the recommendation to resume enforcement of all parking fees effective July 6, 2020. And do we have Deputy Chief Mark Marino on? Is the deputy chief on here?
He is, he's muted.
He is, sorry, he isn't. Let me shoot him a text.
Okay. He was, he's just unmuted, so.
Good afternoon, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes.
We can hear you. Good afternoon.
All right, great. Apologize for the lack of video feed, but you know, appreciate the opportunity to speak with everyone today. And again, as the First Selectmen said, my purpose today is part of representing the Department of Parking Services is to recommend that effective July 6th, we do resume charging for daily and parking fees and metered parking throughout town. I wanted to say that, you know, obviously, I totally support the decision that was made back in March to suspend the parking fees in height of the pandemic and the situation that we were dealing with. And really continue to support them right up through the Phase 2 reopening that we're going through. But now feel that we're at a point where we should begin to resume the parking fees. And I don't believe that it's going to have a negative impact on attracting people to the downtown area. Parking, our parking fees are still considered a bargain when compared to many of the other jurisdictions and communities close by. So I don't think it's going to have a negative impact with regards to attracting people to the downtown area. But I am beginning to show concern about the revenue deficit that, you know, we are, we're going to see as a result of the suspended parking fees, which is going to be about three months of a lack of revenue for the Department of Parking Services and the parking fund and also the general fund for the town.
Okay, and this would start July 6th?
That's correct. I thought that was a good target date. So we'll get through the July 4th holiday weekend. And, you know, the following Monday, we would resume with, you know, charging for parking. Obviously, the parking fund and the system that's set up is not designed to sustain free parking for an indefinite period of time without an adverse impact on the town's revenue.
Yeah, I would agree. And we were getting lots of calls in the last few weeks about, not only that, a lack of revenue, but also people taking advantage and hogging up spaces. And they were crying out for the enforcement again. So I think it's perfect timing. Any questions, Lauren?
I just have a question. I too was getting feedback about people just staying longer than they might have had there been a fee involved. We had approved an increase in fees, and now I can't recall, and apologies for not recalling, when they were to go in effect. Did they go into effect before we suspended charging? Or had they not gone into effect yet?
No, the rate increases did go into effect. We addressed that back in January, shortly after the state tax was implemented towards parking fees.
Thank you.
So Deputy Chief Marino, this is Jill Oberlander. My recollection is that you had downsized your parking enforcement officers earlier this season because you were not enforcing the parking. Is that, is that correct? And do you plan to then rehire if you're going to implement the parking fees?
So what we did was, obviously, when Town Hall closed due to COVID-19 and all nonessential workers were sent home, staff was sent home. And those, the administrative staff that could do work from home, obviously, were continuing to do so. Shortly after that happened, and when the parks were closed, we began to bring in the parking enforcement officers to assist us with monitoring the parks and making sure that we had a presence there. And, you know, we could, you know, obviously, maintain the safety by, you know, keeping people out of the parks. And then, as that progressed into soft openings, just making sure that the people were not congregating in large groups, et cetera. So we kind of reverted to using them for other functions. Now that we've closed Greenwich Avenue, we've used them to kind of monitor the traffic posts there and the surrounding areas. But we have furloughed a couple of our part-time employees. We don't anticipate bringing them back immediately. We're going to see how things go once we do resume the parking enforcement. And we also have a couple of open positions in the department that we delayed filling because of the revenue issues that the department and the town is dealing with. And we're also scaling back some of the capital projects that we had anticipated for fiscal year '21. You know, paving reparking lots, we're going to reduce that number again to reduce the overall revenue expenditures for the coming fiscal year.
So all you did was furlough part-timers? There's no, there's been no reduction in force otherwise?
That's correct.
Okay, so it'll be the same? And if you were to bring people back on, will it be the same part-timers or?
They're currently working, you know, their full schedule, five days a week right now as we speak. Again, working the post on Greenwich Avenue at the closure and assisting with the parks and also enforcing some of the other parking regulations that were put on hold for some time, including enforcing the residential parking permits. We've gotten a number of complaints from area residents about, you know, the lack of parking in these residential zones where permits are required for residential parking.
Right. So if you reallocate them back to parking enforcement, who will provide the services that they've been providing for the last several months?
Well, at this point, the parks are pretty much open. So, you know, obviously, the police department has had a significant presence in many of the parks, obviously, including Todd's Point. So, and that will continue throughout the summer.
And what kind of public advisory are you planning on? If you were to start collecting parking fees in essentially just over a week, I guess, week or two, how are you going to notify the public? I think there could be a lot of confusion about that.
Right, exactly. And so our parking enforcement officers are out there. They, you know, they are looking, you know, they are addressing other parking violations on the avenue and downtown and throughout town, really. And so they're talking to people. You know, once we get a confirmation as to whether or not we're going to start enforcement, I would hope that the First Selectmen's Office would put out a press release. Department of Parking Services will also put out a press release. We'll update the town website accordingly. And also Chamber of Commerce, those types of things. And the, you know, we wanted, that's why we picked July 6th as the start date so that we would have time to get the word out before we begin to commence charging for parking again.
Yeah, so, and I wonder whether you looked at a more nuanced plan than just reinstituting the older fees, one that perhaps would discourage parking for a long period of time on the avenue, but might encourage more of the off-street parking that so would keep the avenue more pedestrian-friendly by differential pricing? Did you think about that at all as a?
Well, there is a significant savings in parking, in the long-term parking lots that are, you know, on the periphery of, you know, Greenwich Avenue. Those 12-hour lots are, you know, you can park there for six hours a day as opposed to almost twice as much on Greenwich Avenue if you were going to park for a full day. So, you know, those, you know, one of the things we did look to do, and if you recall, we came to the Board of Selectmen late last year with the request to sell permits in the Lafayette parking lot to get more usage, you know, out of that lot and offer a reduced rate to, you know, long-term employees that park there every day. So unfortunately, that kind of got sidelined a little bit because of the closures, et cetera. But we do have a number of people that are interested in permits, annual merchant permits in that parking lot. And we're going to proceed with that in the very near future and selling those permits. I would like to offer programs similar to that in many of the other parking lots, you know, throughout the central Greenwich Business District. Obviously, we already have one at the West End. Obviously, we already have one at the West End Lot in Old Greenwich. We have them in Byram. We have them at the Soundview Lot where employees can purchase merchant parking permits for the year. And I would suggest that we consider doing that in some of the other parking lots in Central Greenwich, such as the Liberty Way Parking Lot and some of the other parking lots in the area.
Have you, and last question, have you reached out to any of the retailers to talk about reinstituting the parking fees to see what their reaction is, given that we're just really starting to reopen?
I have not, no.
I know that when we talked to some of the, we had a visit on Greenwich Avenue one night and there were some non-restaurant merchants that were saying because people were parking longer, they weren't getting that kind of turnover in people visiting their stores because they weren't finding places to park. I don't, we didn't talk to everybody, but there was a little bit of a sense of that.
Yeah, I think the most of the people, well, all of the people that reached out to us, the merchants, were saying the same thing. At first, I thought maybe they would say, keep it going, but they said that the opposite happened where people were taking those spots longer and longer and it was less of a turnover, so they were having issues. So that's why they've been asking for the, for us to resume the enforcement of the parking. So unless, I don't know. Jill, did you hear anything else or just asking?
Yeah, no, I hadn't, I hadn't heard anything. I know that as a resident, it's actually really welcoming to have no parking fees and it makes you, encourages you to go downtown and since now it's much easier to find a spot. Yeah, all of that is, I would think, an enhancement to retail, but I do hear the other discussion points as well. I would just encourage our Department of Parking Services to really take a holistic view on how we can, and I've just recently received a number of the parking studies. I'll be looking at them myself to see is there a way to better rationalize our parking inventory that is supportive of employee commercial, longer-term parking, encouraging people to park off the main retail strips so that we can have a more pedestrian-friendly downtown. I do think the vibrancy of that is one of the things that we're, we are hopefully looking to capture and continue, and I think parking ends up being critical to that as well. So to start quickly on a real, you know, first look again at our parking inventory and how we structure it and how we provide transportation from parking to the downtown areas.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. With no other questions or comments, is there a motion to approve the recommendation to resume enforcement of all parking fees effective July 6, 2020?
Lauren Raven motions to resume or to accept the recommendation to resume enforcement of all parking fees effective July 6, 2020.
Jill Oberlander, I'll second that with a request to the Parking Services Department, Office of the First Selectmen, and also to Ken Borse, who I see in the audience, that educating the public and publicizing that is really going to be critical for seamless transition. So if we could really focus on getting the word out that parking fees will resume.
And all those in favor, Fred Camillo votes yes.
Jill Oberlander votes yes.
Lauren Raven votes yes.
Okay, approved, and we will start the, getting the word out tomorrow. So thank you, and we'll update all of our social media sites, too. So thank you, Deputy Chief Marino.
Okay, thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thanks for your work. Okay. Now we, I see that we don't have to go into executive session, we're just going to be voting on nominations, which I will turn it over to Lauren Raven.
Okay, we have a dozen, so be patient. First one, I motion to nominate Anne Marie Hines as a returning member of the Commission on Aging for a term ending June 30, 2023.
Sir, is that good?
Yeah, Jill Oberlander, I'll second that nomination.
Okay. All those in favor, Fred Camillo votes yes.
Jill Oberlander votes yes.
Lauren Raven votes yes. Second one.
Before we go through the entire list, I actually just would like to make a comment about all of, not about the candidates or the nominations that we're considering now, but just something for this Board of Selectmen and the Selectmen Nominations Advisory Committee to think about going forward. You know, we came into office, this board, with a lot of nominations already made and put forward, or candidates made and put forward, but I think it is incumbent upon us as we move forward, now that we have gone through most of our list, to take a hard look at our boards and commissions and make sure that they are representative of our community and represent diverse interests, diverse geography, reflect our town for all of the great diversity that we have, and I would encourage each of us and in our conversations going forward to make sure that our boards are reflective of our whole community. So I just wanted to, there's no real time to make that comment, so I wanted to do it before we started. It is not in reference to the specific candidates, but just in general to our process and how our leadership reflects the community. Thank you.
Thank you, and I'll echo what you said and support what you said, that we actually, I think the three of us have been committed to really looking hard to promote more participation from all corners of the town, and I think we'll be surprised how many people will be answering the call. So thank you, well said.
Yep, ditto, triple, I guess, instead of ditto. Okay, so the second nomination, I motion to nominate Ellen Wilson as a returning member of the Commission on Aging for a term ending June 30, 2023.
I'll second Jill Oberlander, I'll second that nomination.
All those in favor, Fred Camillo votes yes.
Jill Oberlander votes yes.
Lauren Raven votes yes. Okay, our third one, Lauren Raven nominates, I motion to nominate Kip Bergweyer as a returning member of the Commission on Aging for a term ending June 30, 2023.
Jill Oberlander, I'll second that nomination.
All those in favor, Fred Camillo votes yes.
Jill Oberlander votes yes.
Lauren Raven votes yes. Fourth one, Lauren Raven motions to nominate Bernie Armstrong as a returning regular member of the Harbor Management Commission for a term ending March 31, 2023.
Jill Oberlander, I'll second that nomination.
All those in favor, Fred Camillo votes yes.
Jill Oberlander votes yes.
Lauren Raven votes yes. Our fifth one, Lauren Raven motions to nominate Beth Forbes as a new regular member of the Harbor Management Commission for a term ending March 31, 2023.
Jill Oberlander, second that nomination.
Okay, all those in favor, Fred Camillo votes yes.
Jill Oberlander votes yes.
Lauren Raven votes yes. Our sixth one, Lauren Raven motions to nominate Casey McKee as a returning alternate member of the Harbor Management Commission for a term ending March 31, 2023.
Jill Oberlander, I second that nomination.
All those in favor, Fred Camillo votes yes.
Jill Oberlander votes yes.
Lauren Raven votes yes. Our seventh one, Lauren Raven motions to nominate Ann Fountain as a new member of the Board of Health for a term ending June 30, 2023.
Jill Oberlander, I'll second that nomination.
All those in favor, Fred Camillo votes yes.
Jill Oberlander votes yes.
Lauren Raven votes yes. Our eighth, Lauren Raven motions to nominate Lauren O'Keefe as a returning member of the Board of Health for a term ending June 30, 2023.
Jill Oberlander, I'll second that nomination.
All those in favor, Fred Camillo votes yes.
Jill Oberlander votes yes.
Lauren Raven votes yes. Our ninth, Lauren Raven motions to nominate Sarah Gamble as a new member of the Board of Health for a term ending June 30, 2023.
Jill Oberlander, I'll second that nomination.
All those in favor, Fred Camillo votes yes.
Jill Oberlander votes yes.
Lauren Raven votes yes. Our 10th, Lauren Raven motions to nominate Vic Sandu as a returning member of the Board of Health for a term ending June 30, 2023.
Jill Oberlander, I'll second that nomination.
All those in favor of Vic Sandu, Fred Camillo votes yes.
Jill Oberlander votes yes.
Lauren Raven votes yes. Our 11th, Lauren Raven motions to nominate Dawn Turner as a new member of the Board of Human Services for a term ending June 30, 2023.
Jill Oberlander, I second that nomination.
All those in favor, Fred Camillo votes yes.
Jill Oberlander votes yes.
And Lauren Raven votes yes. Our last one for this round, Lauren Raven motions to nominate Sue Botson as a new member of the Board of Parks and Recreation for a term ending June 30, 2023.
Jill Oberlander, I second that nomination.
All those in favor of Sue Botson, Fred Camillo votes yes.
Jill Oberlander votes yes.
And Lauren Raven votes yes.
Okay, so that's it? We all set with that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, great job. Thank you so much for your work on that. We're catching up. That's very good. So just a quick note to thank everybody whose name was out there, who had put their name forth to be on a board or commission. We will circle back with every single one of them and let them know that we'd still love for them to serve, but we only had a certain amount of spots available at this time, but we look forward to working with them also. But we're excited for the ones that are re-upped or that are coming on for the first time to these boards and commissions, and we wish them well and look forward to working with them. So with that, I don't see any other business. So is there a motion to adjourn?
Lauren Raven, I motion to adjourn our June 25 meeting of the Board of Selectmen.
Jill Oberlander, I'll second that motion.
Those in favor, Fred Camillo, yes.
Jill Oberlander, yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Thank you all, and we'll circle back soon. Thank you.